Good evening, we're going to call our meeting to order. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education Monthly Meeting. Today is Wednesday, November 15th, 2023. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Here.
Ms. Belko?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePaine?
Here.
Ms. Fabiano? Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Gerby?
Here.
Mr. Tofano? We have a quorum. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published and electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted November 10th, 2023, at all schools, on the district website, The Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our statutory oath for our new board member who was appointed last month at our meeting to fill the vacant seat of Karen Beerman after her resignation. Mr. Matthew Gorm, I invite you to come up now and we will do the statutory oath.
Check 1, 2. I, Matthew Gorm, do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will hear the true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Matthew Gorm, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of Member of a Board of Education, and I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all duties of the office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. I, Matthew Gorm, do solemnly swear and declare that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19.4-1, and that I am not disqualified to hold this office due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A-12-1, so help me God.
Okay, congratulations again.
Thank you.
Welcome to our table. The next item on the agenda is our closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, or bullying; matters protected by attorney-client privilege; confidential personnel matter. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we will now move into closed session. Thank you. Okay, good evening, we're back in our public session. The next item on our agenda is our Student Board Members' Report. We have one of our student board members here, Sa Hedge. Good welcome, good evening. If you want to give your report to the board?
Sure, thank you so much. So I'll start off with this evening Barclaybrook. After a busy but successful week of parent-teacher conferences, Barclaybrook ended the month of October with Halloween parades and class celebrations. The Barclaybrook staff dress-up theme this year was Mario, and Mrs. Mahoney led the Halloween parades as Mario. Additionally, the Monroe Township Fire Department District 3 sponsored a fire safety assembly for the students. Students learned about fire safety and visited the fire truck. Upon returning from our November break, Barclaybrook School has welcomed parents to visit and participate in class activities for American Education Week. The students are also currently working on a school-wide STEM project that will be displayed and celebrated next week. Moving on to Brookside. Parent-teacher conferences took place on October 18th and October 19th, and they had an exceptional turnout. Brookside School held a Think Pink Day fundraiser for breast cancer awareness on November 2nd. Parent visitation for American Education Week is taking place this week. Brookside had over 120 parents pre-registered to attend. Additionally, Brookside Student Council offers have been selected and are beginning tasks such as assisting with student arrival and dismissal and exploring fundraisers. Woodland Elementary School celebrated Halloween with several fun activities such as a pumpkin patch sponsored by the PTO and STEM activities in the classroom. Student Council and the Unified Pals students coordinated Think Pink Day and Spine Epiph minded Awareness Day. Monroe Township Fire District Number 1 visited Woodland and provided the students with a fun and very informative assembly, including very important fire safety tips such as planning your escape, stop, drop, and roll, and students were able to check out the fire department's gear and clothing as well. Ms. Herman and Ms. Fleming coordinated activities leading up to Veterans Day. The school kicked off the events with a Wounded Warrior Walkathon in the gym while raising funds. The school raised approximately $3,800 toward the Wounded Warrior Project and will be visited by this foundation in the new year. On Friday, November 3rd, several veterans were honored during the school's first Veterans Day Assembly. The American Legion showed the students why there are 13 folds in the American flag and what each means. Veterans shared stories and children had the opportunity to ask questions. It was an incredible day, and this assembly will be available on the school website. Woodland celebrates American Education Week by inviting parents and guardians into the school on the 15th and 16th of November. Oak Tree Elementary Schools, November 13th to 17th is American Education Week at Oak Tree. On November 14th, all of Oak Tree's first grade students participated in a First East Fall Festival at which they sang and rotated to different stations with their parents. Grade 3 will be celebrating balloons over Oak Tree, creating different kinds of balloons similar to those on display at the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. Parents will assist with these STEM projects. Other classes at Oak Tree have invited parents in to join their child with a variety of projects and activities planned through the week. On November 2nd, Oak Tree's PTA planned a Falcon Friends Reading Night. Parents and children attend the event where you were able to create a stuffed falcon similar to Build-A-Bear. Teachers were on hand to read stories to the students who were also able to visit Oak Tree Scholastic Book Fair. On November 21st, One Book, One School will return to Oak Tree. This program is when Mrs. Dinsmore, the principal, reads the same story to all the classes in the school throughout the school day. Each year, the books focus on a different theme. This year, the book is focused on making good choices. The first book is "The Way I Act." Oak Tree Student Council is running its annual food drive for Thanksgiving to help families in need. Each grade is assigned different parts of a dinner and then donations are distributed to local families. Oak Tree's annual Holiday Shop will take place on November 30th and December 1st. Moving along to Apple Garth. Our students completed letters to the veterans in the month of November. Apple Garth is continuing coding classes after school on November 15th and November 29th. On November 21st, Apple Garth is running a mad science class, stunt planes and flight after school. Apple Garth has American Education Week parent visits from November 13th to the 17th. Over 100 parents have signed up to visit Apple Garth, and we look forward to their visits. Student Council is running a food drive for a local food pantry as well. On November 20th, Apple Garth is running a school-wide election complete with sign-ins and voting booths. Apple Garth will simulate the voting process to decide upon a school motivational statement suggested by the 5th grade classes for the 2023-24 school year. The Oak Tree and Apple Garth PTA has run the following recent and upcoming events as well: the Halloween trunk-or-treat, which was a huge success; the Thanksgiving pie sale; cornucopia making class on November 21st; Falcon Family Fun Night; school store on the 15th; and the Holiday Shop on November 28th and 29th. Though this is a short month of school days, Apple Garth has packed it full. Moving on to Monroe Township Middle School. They celebrated their American Education Week the week of November 13th to 17th. Monroe Township Middle School invited the parents to visit on November 14th, and after-school clubs resumed on November 14th. Monroe Township Middle School will also be holding virtual parent-teacher conferences on November 20th and 21st. And last but not least, Monroe Township High School has enjoyed a wonderful start to the month of November with its annual Fall Coffee House on November 1st. The annual Spanish and Italian Honor Society volleyball tournament will take place November 16th. Monroe Township High School looks forward to a wonderful rest of the month along with a bunch of sports tryouts and many, many other events. Thank you so much for listening this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for the comprehensive report. Our schools are doing so much from elementary through middle school through high school, and we appreciate you keeping on top of all their events and reporting them to us. So thank you very much. All right. The next item on our agenda is our Student and Staff Recognition Presentation. It gives me great pleasure to welcome our students and their families here this evening and our staff members being recognized. It truly is a wonderful evening tonight to recognize the great accomplishments of our students as well as our staff members. So, Dr. Chanley, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and to echo what Ms. Gerby said, we're very happy to have everyone here this evening. One of the things that we'd like to try and do is acknowledge and celebrate our children, your children, and celebrate our staff members as well because success is always a team effort. And rather than just have it all at the end of the year, we're really going to try and celebrate on a monthly basis. So for this evening's presentation, we are acknowledging our staff who did an exceptional job preparing our children to be a success on the AP examinations. Additionally, we have children that go above and beyond in our community, both in the school community and in the external community of Monroe for volunteerism. That always includes our Boy Scouts and Eagle Scouts when they do projects to give back to their schools. So it's just an opportunity to say we're excited to acknowledge everybody's success, and we get to do that aloud. And I want to thank Mr. Maralda as well as our other administrators that are here this evening that have worked toward this and to be able to be here for the presentation and to acknowledge our children. So on that note, we're going to, I'm going to ask anyone that would like to come forward, Ms. Gerby, Ms. Bora, Dr. Lehman, anyone else that would like to join us. We're going to stand up front and shake some hands and give out some certificates, and we're so glad you're here to watch, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Chanley, Mrs. Gerby. This year, we're going to try to recognize our staff and students throughout the year as opposed to just at the end of the year as we've done in years past to make sure all of our individuals that are being recognized get the attention and the acknowledgement that they deserve. This month, we're going to be, our theme is, although we're not theming our months, our theme is centering on some of the service activities that our students have accomplished over the last few months in addition to the outstanding accomplishments of our instructors at the high school as Dr. Chanley stated. So if we could advance the slide, we're struggling a little bit. That's okay. But our first presenter who would like to talk about some of the service that our students performed this summer at our summer program is Ms. Heidi Cantor, who is a teacher of Family Consumer Science at the Monroe Township High School. Ms. Cantor, if you'd like to come up?
Like I see everybody's names up there. All right, good evening, my name is Mrs. Cantor. I'm part of the Family Consumer Science teachers here at Monroe Township High School. I actually teach Living on Your Own. I was honored to be able to teach Cooking with Cantor this summer, and I had an amazing group of student volunteers. So each and every one of these students took out time from their summer schedule and showed up here at school 8 o'clock every morning till 12:30, literally being like bombarded by everything that was going on in the kitchens, but performed excellence as far as teaching these young students that were campers how to cook. So I'm going to start reading off these names, and they'll come up here and receive their award. All right, first, I have Jasmine. All right, would you like to come up? I would like Kelsey to please come up. Yeah, yeah, I'm just going in order of the girls that I see that are here. All right. Sorry to kind of... Yeah. I'm just calling the girls that I can see here. I have Hannah. Hannah? Yes. No, Hannah. Hannah Abonda? Okay. See, I'm making you guys work tonight. You're working tonight. Okay. Mia? Would you like to come up? And I'm looking to see who else is here. Pushy? I never do anything easy, so I'm just warning you now. All right, so this is Mia Terranova?
There you go.
Okay. Pushy Shaw? Would you like to come up? The other girls, I really don't see here this evening, but I'm going to, I'll state their names. So Anna Chin was one of the participants this summer. Marisol. Okay. Tameya. Sophia. Shelley. And I think that's it. That's it. And honestly, all these girls really experienced a wonderful summer with our program, and a lot of these girls are seniors and they're graduating. So I want to give them a round of applause for all they did.
So our next group of students that we'd like to recognize were volunteers in our summer art studio, which is right down the hall from Cooking with Cantor, under the supervision of Mr. David Varelius, who I do not believe is here tonight, I did not see him come in. So I will read their names, and if you are here tonight, please come forward. These students did an exceptional job working with our younger art students here in the district, which is sometimes a little bit more than you bargain for when you're working with young artists. But they did a fantastic job particularly with managing the mess that all of our clay made. So if you're here, please come up, and we thank you in advance. Megha Gambharala. Naya Patel. And Sahil Trivedi. And seeing none of them here tonight, we will move on to the next category, which were our volunteers that helped us design and execute our district's first attempt at the first Lego League. This was a volunteer effort that began prior to the summer last spring in conjunction with members of our community. And what it resulted in was us learning an entire new computer science platform and designing it for our younger students, grades 3 to 8. And we got it off the ground, and we could absolutely not have done it. These students had gone through it before, and in some instances, were instructing our staff on many of the learning modules. So we absolutely could not have run this program without them and their leadership and also their content area expertise. I know not all of them are here tonight, but I want to read their names regardless, and I apologize in advance for any mispronunciations of your name. Avani Gambharala. Anish Maskar. Tanisha Pandya. And Nitish Sunukkum. Sunkum, my apologies. Thank you, Anish. And these students worked under the supervision of Ms. Kristen Miller. The next recognition worked for me directly, and I'm very appreciative of all that she did to help us in a variety of tasks beginning last spring and throughout the summer. Sia Desai had considerable experience in many of the enrichment camps that we were running despite only being an 8th grader. So it was an awesome opportunity to have someone with expertise and work ethic, that of an adult, come and join us this summer and work with Ms. Singer, Ms. Side, myself, and really participate in all of the activities and do a lot of the things that most people wouldn't have wanted to do themselves, but took it as a learning experience, and she continues to volunteer for me to this day. So I'd like to call up and recognize her. Thank you, Sia Desai. So that wraps up the component that spoke about the service and volunteer efforts for our summer program. We'll now shift over to some of the volunteer services that took place throughout our community under the umbrella of our Boy Scouts of America here locally. And Ms. Graziano, if you're back here, if you'd like to maybe, oh, there you are. So I'll invite Principal Graziano from Apple Garth Elementary School to speak a little bit about this next acknowledgement.
Good evening, everyone. It's a real pleasure for me to be able to give an award to this student and Boy Scout. He approached me at Apple Garth and asked totally open-mindedly how he might be able to do something to help the school. He wound up building by hand a bunch of tables that he created an outdoor classroom with for Apple Garth School. He mulched the area, framed the area, built the tables, and he also purchased a whiteboard for teachers to be able to work on when they bring their classes outside during nice weather. It was a beautiful gift to Apple Garth, and it's especially special to us because he was an Apple Garth graduate several years ago. So I'm so happy to be able to recognize Abhinav Maganti. Abhinav, if you could come up? You are a wonderful young man, you're a wonderful student, and now you are a wonderful human as well, giving back to your community. Thank you, Abhinav.
So our next recognition is another Boy Scouts of America project that took place at Barclaybrook School. Ms. Mahoney was not able to join us tonight, but she wanted to make sure that we included this next individual for his contributions and a long line of familial contributions to the district, particularly through the Boy Scouts, which are always appreciative of our service groups here in town. And I would like to acknowledge Rayon Bora for his service to the Barclaybrook School. So pivoting back to more student-driven service projects in the classroom, I would like to ask Principal Graziano to come back up and talk about the next group of individuals.
Me again. I want to thank this group of young men that are over there behind the bookshelves. We had a parent at Apple Garth who bumped into these guys teaching a coding class, and she recruited them to see if they would be willing to come to Apple Garth and do some introductory coding activities with our students. So the guys have rocked the house with participation. We've had groups of 50-plus come out to have their introductory coding classes taught to them. These guys are so patient, so understanding with the students. They go around and they help them when they get stuck. I actually propositioned them all to go into the education field last year, and they all turned me down, unfortunately. I think maybe they want to do a little something more with this computer stuff. But you never know, they might change their minds. I only know them by their first names, so guys, please forgive me if I butcher your last names, okay? We have Aditya Danani. Gautam Kotak. Melan Pai. Hanshaw Reddy. Janans Shah. Navneet Thanagal. And Abhitaj Savutam. Thank you for the many hours you have spent at Apple Garth working with our students. We appreciate you.
And I would just like to add that our coding volunteers will be visiting Brookside later this season. So thank you for taking the program to Brookside later on. Okay, next, we're going to shift to fine and performing arts. Now, we will be doing a full acknowledgement of our athletic competition and competitive performing arts season later on in the school year, but tonight, we're going to talk about our middle school participants of marching bands, marching band, excuse me, specifically. And I'll have our marching band director at the high school, Mr. Sean Nagpaul, come on up now and discuss why this is a significant participation from our middle school students.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Mr. Sean Nagpaul. I'm actually the band director at the high school, one of the band directors, but I have the pleasure of teaching both the middle, actually, at all, most of the elementary schools and the middle school as well. My job is very, I'm very fortunate to have this position where I can teach 4th through 12th grade music, which is really nice. One of the benefits of my job is I get to direct the marching band, and one of the great things we offer is allowing 8th graders to join our marching band, which is a lot of fun. It's for social, emotional reasons, you know, getting them to prep for high school, but also we wanted to give those 8th graders a lot of opportunity to enhance their musical skills. And for those of them that are not getting, for those of them that are looking for more of a challenge, they got that at the high school level with marching band, which we provided. So we would like to recognize our class of 8th graders this year, which is one of our largest classes of 8th graders, which are 14 students. So Henry Alverenga. Tishae Daru. Jasgaran Kayler. Snigda Malakapetta. June Ray McCarthy. Evan Newell. Suchi Oak. Aman Patel. Nikki Poehl. Ronit Poehl. Dylan Polashok. Sonat Saxenam. Harpita Tulson. And Mithali Viswan. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Nagpaul. So last month, Dr. Lehman presented a school testing report. Included in that report was our results from our most recent AP testing. And the second half of our special presentation tonight is going to be to acknowledge the fantastic instructors that had worked with our students that led to these results. But before doing that, we have a very special student recognition pursuant to those results, and I will now introduce one of our high school's assistant principals, Dr. Jim Cernansky, to conclude our presentation tonight.
So for an AP Seminar exam perfect score, we have Simran Kalori. Okay, now we have a bunch of many different departments, many different AP teachers. Some of them are here this evening. We're going to start with our advanced placement instructors for mathematics and computer science. So I'm going to read the names. If you are here, please come up to the front. Ms. Jennifer Chase, calculus. Ms. Kathleen Doherty, calculus. Mr. Gerald Minter, computer science. Ms. Sarah Pizimenti, computer science. Mr. Peter Rucktichel, calculus. And actually, he was statistics, sorry. Ms. Tracy Scher, calculus. Okay, now we have advanced placement instructors for the sciences. Dr. Rama Basu, physics. Mr. Jeff Francis, physics. Dr. Chris Himmelheber, biology. Mr. Christian Jessup, ecology and environmental sciences. Dr. George Pangalos, chemistry. And Ms. Tracy Rickert-Venino, environmental science. And now we have our advanced placement instructors for English Language Arts and World Language. Mr. Robert Burns, English Language Arts. Ms. Natasha Karenante, Spanish. Ms. Shay Cohen, seminar. Ms. Sarah Cox, Italian Language and Cultures. Ms. Sharon DiMarco, Research, English. Ms. Carolyn McRory, English Language Arts. Ms. Beth Walk, English Language Arts. And now we have Social Studies. Ms. Jackie Abruzzi, US History. Mr. John Beigos, US History. Mr. Kenneth Chanley, European History. Ms. Allison Driscoll, US History. Ms. Marissa Guerra, US History and US Government. Mr. Tom Lyon, Psychology. Ms. Alexa Marshall, US History. Mr. Chris Thum, US History. And now we have advanced placement instructors for the Fine Performing Arts, Careers, Technology. Mr. Eugene G. Quinto, Microeconomics. Ms. Maria Naumic, Studio Art. Mr. Mark Pierce, Microeconomics. Ms. Lindsay Reinhardt, Music Theory. Ms. Alana Syed, Macroeconomics. Mr. David Varellis, Art History. Ms. Marina Vidalin, Macroeconomics. And we have our Advanced Placement Program Coordinator, Ms. Casey Buffalino. Thank you, have a nice evening.
Hi there. We have one final recognition this evening, and I don't know if Ms. Corallo is back yet because, you know, we do have to run Falcon Care. But when we, when she had, when we notified our administrative leadership team about any individual staff members that were worthy of recognition, she immediately, Ms. Corallo immediately responded and said, "There's an individual that deserves recognition," and I'm not sure if she's here tonight, and even if she's not, we want to read her name and recognize the contributions to the Falcon Care program, which takes place after school hours and services many students in our community. And I just want to say thank you and acknowledge Ms. Joan Conroy for her contributions to the Falcon Care program. So Dr. Chanley, Mrs. Skirby, that concludes this month's student and staff recognition. Thank you.
Just give another round of applause to everybody that we recognized tonight. Congratulations to everyone, all of our students and our staff who make our district so wonderful. The next item on our agenda are our committee reports. Is there any committee wishing to give a report? Ms. Bora?
I'm going to be presenting two committee reports today. For Mr. Tufano, I'm going to be presenting the BGNT. That's the one I'll start with. The BGNT committee met on November 1st. The members in attendance were Mrs. Skirby, myself, Mr. Tufano, Mrs. Fabiano, and Scott. And the items discussed were the Warr City Baseball Field. At the September 13, 2023 BGNT committee meeting, the committee reviewed the scope of 2014 renovations to the Warr City Baseball Field and heard concerns presented to the athletic director, Stephen Brandica, regarding the condition of the field, specifically the gravel warning, track surface behind home plate, and options for upgrades. Mr. Brandica updated the committee, having recently inspected the field with Mr. Russ Church of the Monroe Township Baseball Association. Mr. Church indicated that there were no significant safety concerns related to the current construction type. However, his preference would be to use, would be the use for alternate materials. Administration provided budget estimates in the range of $17,500 for replacing the warning track surface with sod, under drainage, and irrigation. The committee requested that any natural seasonal erosion that may be creating lips between surfaces be addressed prior to the start of the baseball season, along with the application of a quality infield mix. Furthermore, the committee supports the donation of bullpen fencing by a parent baseball group. The committee requests administration pursue an estimate for changing the infield of the Warr City Baseball Field to a synthetic turf infield material. The second item on the agenda was the lacrosse rebound wall. The committee requests that Mr. Brandica survey surrounding districts to obtain information regarding any lacrosse tennis rebound walls that may have been recently constructed and returned, and return to the committee with ideas for construction of such a wall on our property. Once the scope and location are determined, administration could further pursue the cost of constructing the same as a future capital budget expenditure. Furthermore, the committee chair noted that there may be potential for a donation of construction services for this project. Third item on the agenda was the annual landscape contract. The committee supports renewal of the contract with Boss Landscaping at the contracted 2% annual increase for the 2024 season. The administration will prepare a resolution for board action on this, on this contract, which is on the agenda today. The fourth item was the Oak Tree Solar Update. Administration provided a performance overview of the system for its, from its inception in 2008 through September 2023. It is estimated the cost of construction will be fully offset in about two years, utilizing the new reduced SREC sales rate. From that point forward, all energy savings and revenue from SREC sales, sales will be 100% profit. Administration noted that since we entered the program in 2008, the value of a SREC has varied from $30 to $650, with the most recent value at $30 per SREC. Oak Tree has now been in the NJ SREC program for 15 years, and after 15 years, we are reclassified into the NJ Class 1 rec market for the remainder of the system's life. These SRECs rate at a much lower value in this class, which is $30. The fifth item on the agenda was the traffic design at MTHS. Committee members expressed safety concerns pertaining to the traffic pattern at the side entrance to the Monroe Township High School along Perranville Road. Currently, the traffic is prohibited from a left turn out of the site as well as a left turn into the site. This matter was previously reviewed by the committee with Monroe Township Police Department, and the police advised Perranville Road is not wide enough for a designated turning lane to accomplish a left-hand turn onto the site without impacting through traffic along Perranville Road. The committee noted that increased student population has worsened the traffic safety issue in these areas. The committee requested that the administration contact the Middlesex County Engineering Department to see if they can investigate this matter further and provide options for traffic modifications to address our concerns. And the final item was, there was, the final update is about a couple non-agenda items that were discussed in the committee, where the administration provided an update and overview of the sewage pump station operation at the Monroe Township High School. The system has been serviced and is currently fully operational, and the administration also provided an overview of the state-funded digital critical incident mapping program for a public school. That concludes the BGNT report. Any questions?
Ms. Right there.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, when you mentioned about the SRECs from Oak Tree, and I do believe this may have come up at another point earlier, but has there been any look, anyone who's looked into having solar panels possibly at some of the other schools, alternative energy sources? I know the state grants aren't necessarily what they were years ago, but I also personally, knowing SRECs from my own personal home, that is a way to sort of get back some of the investment as well as the savings that might come. So I just wasn't sure if that's something that has been looked into.
I can just answer from my experience on being on the committee that this has been explored. Mr. Tig, I believe, has explored all kinds of grants that are out there, and I don't think at this point there is anyone that is left available for us. I'm, please don't quote me on this, but this has been a constant conversation that the capital cost of putting it down is extremely high, and we cannot do so without a grant. And there doesn't seem to be anything left out there for us.
Thank you.
But it should be a constant conversation. Anybody else?
No.
I could present the personnel, please. The Personnel Committee met on November 1st. The board members in attendance were myself, Mr. Tufano, Mrs. Scott, Mrs. Skirby, and the administrator in attendance was Dr. Chanley. We reviewed the current openings in the district. At the time of the meeting, we had 22 vacancies, 13 due to resignations, three due to retirement, one due to transfer, and five due to leave. There were no exit surveys reported for this month. On completion of her doctorate degree and reaching her longevity of 20 years, Dr. Chanley expressed her interest to the Personnel Committee for a revision of her current contract. This was discussed last month in closed session with the entire board and today as well. The board cannot take any action here without the prior approval of the executive county superintendent, which was requested by the board secretary after this month's committee meeting. Once we get the approval, there will be a public forum on this issue, hopefully in the December public meeting, so that we can collect public comment consistent with our legal obligation before the board deliberates and votes in public. And that concludes the committee report for personnel. Any questions? Thank you.
Is there another committee wishing to? Ms. Belko, if you'd like to give your reports?
Yes, I have a report for both the committee for finance as well as curriculum. So I'll start with finance. We reviewed in our meeting just a week and a half ago, long. Time is a little weird this time of year, but we have the September invoices for our attorney fees, which are greatly reduced from what they have been in the past six months. We're, we're under $10,000, so 9358 for September's invoices, and, you know, are just calling out that our Oprah costs with the attorney were only $210. So the other item is the bill list, and we have as item B in the business administrators' report today, we have bills totaling $326,293.76, and they have been ratified and signed as per our policy, and we, there is a previously submitted addendum for $6 million, which will be ratified by the board tonight if there's no questions. We also discussed a few items. Returning, item F, which was on the agenda tonight, for disposal of surplus property, and we are, have on for tonight for our business administrator to be able to take our excess items and items that we are no longer using, and they're all listed here in item F in the agenda, so if anybody wants to read those. And we also discussed, give me one second. We also discussed the audit update, which there really is a lot, and the budget reviews are happening, so, you know, that was our short and brief finance committee meeting. We did have some additional discussion at the end of the meeting, and if you go out and look at the video, you'll see what we discussed. That's the finance committee report.
Anybody have any questions from Ms. Belko? No? Okay. Would you like to give the curriculum committee meeting update?
I would. Give me two seconds. So the curriculum committee meeting was held on Monday, October 30th. We were trying to make sure that we met the deadline and gave the staff enough time to put all the materials together. We had presentations from the supervisors with Grade 6 Spanish, Phys Ed, Grade 7, Grade 8, and Grade 6. Just to update, it was their time to come up to the curriculum and, you know, come up for curriculum review and standards. Everything is, is made to match the current standards that are out there from the Department of Education. We also talked about the work-based learning program, as well as we did some, had some discussion and some reporting from Mr. Schneider about the pathways to, the alternate pathways to PE, and successfully, the first marking period was really successful. They opened up the, for the second marking period, and that seems to be going well. They've had some students who weren't successful in doing, so they were removed from the program and put back into regular PE classes and moved on, but it seems like the program is really a success, and they already have, I can't remember the number, Dr. Lehman, because I brought last month's committee report, not this month's.
Over 200.
Over 200 for the fourth marking period. The third marking period, all students from the seniors will be in the building because that is their mandatory health requirement class that they have to take, so they'll all be in the building for that. So really an excellent presentation. We also had a presentation and a report back on the second and seven program, which I found really cool. A lot of our high school students went into the second grades at the elementary school and read a book. It's a particular program, so the same book was read across the district to the students in the second grade, very well received. Some of the students, some of the senior students, like, can I do more of this? I want to come back and do this again. They really liked it. And then the second graders wanted, they asked if they could give the seniors hugs, they asked if they could get their autograph on the books, because all the students were given a copy of the book that the seniors read to them. And, and one other little sort of nice fact was that some of the seniors actually went back to the elementary school that they came up through and from. So I think that that's pretty awesome as well. So great things from the curriculum committee. I do, I hope I'm not going to take your thunder, Dr. Lehman, but I do want to mention about the honor roll that the AP program received for, I think the curriculum committee is a great place to mention this, and I did have it up here so I can speak to it, yeah. So AP honor roll, so it was congratulations out to the students and staff. The College Board named Monroe Township High School to the honor roll for our performance on the, performance on our 2023 Advanced Placement Exams. And if any, if our other exam takers are any testament to the young man who got a perfect score, which God bless him, that's wonderful, I think it's great. I think our AP teachers that we all recognized tonight really deserve another round of applause because those programs are, you know, they're stringent and they really have to, they have to abide by the College Board standards, which are standards that are higher than, than ours, higher than the state's. They really produce an incredible curriculum, which allows us to produce some really great citizens out there in the world, and I just think that that's an amazing thing, and we're doing some really amazing things here at the high school and in the district altogether. I mean, I could go on forever because we really are doing some awesome stuff. But that is my curriculum committee report. Dr. Lehman, did I leave anything out? Pretty good. I forgot my head, okay.
Does anyone have any questions from Ms. Belko? Okay, our next committee report. I have one. The November Policy Committee met on October 30th, 2023. There were only two items on the agenda for discussion, Policy and Regulation 5111, Eligibility of Resident and Not Resident Students Review.
Eligibility of Resident and Not Resident Students Revisited to Address an Item That Had Been Overlooked Regarding the Charging of Tuition to Students That Will Either Be Moving Into the District or Moving Out of the District. Bylaw 0143 was also included on the agenda. The committee felt it would be appropriate to include this so that there could be a discussion on whether this bylaw should be amended to allow the Jamesburg representative to vote on a board vacancy moving forward, or if the bylaw should remain as is. It is on today's agenda, which allows for discussion by the full board and for public participation via public forum. And that concludes my report.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay.
Just, did we mention that that one policy is a mandated state policy? We had to make the changes because of the mandates?
I did not mention that it was mandated, but it is.
It's a mandated policy change.
Thank you, Ms. Belko. Okay, and that concludes our committee reports. The next item on our agenda is our public forum. This is for agenda items only. Anybody wishing to address the board, please come up, state your name and municipality. You have four minutes. Is there anybody wishing to speak?
Good evening. Doug Poey, Monroe Township. My first comment relates to the date of tonight's meeting in conjunction with the first reading of Policy 0143. Originally, the November meeting was scheduled for November the 20th. This makes the fifth meeting out of eleven for which the date was changed. Yet the board could not see fit to change the date of the October meeting in order to conduct public interviews of candidates for the vacancy on the board. According to my calculations, that meeting could have been held on any date prior to October 13th.
This is for agenda items only. Can you please tell us which agenda item you are referring to?
I already referenced that with my opening statement. It, it relates to tonight's meeting, the date of this meeting that you changed. It also relates to the first reading of Policy 0143. As I was saying, according to my calculations, that meeting could have been held on any date prior to October 13th. And then according to Policy 0143, you would not have failed to fill the vacancy within sixty-five days. That's just a comment. My second item deals with your comprehensive maintenance plan, which you're voting on tonight. It includes replacing the 1936 and 1960 building roofs of the Applegar School, among a laundry list of many other repairs and maintenance planned for 2024-25. It states that the cost of that particular repair is one hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Yet I seem to recall that the amount talked about in prior meetings was much larger. It was great to read in the latest issue of Monroe News that Mayor Delina will be seeking council approval, approval of shared services agreement, which will provide five million dollars in matching funds in order to secure a four million dollar state grant for replacing the old roof and the older HVAC system. I'm a bit confused about the amount of money involved. Could someone shed light on what this project, what the projected cost actually is? And my final comment, and I couldn't quite hear what was being said because for some reason you're hesitant to speak loudly enough or to have the microphone near enough to your mouth, but there was something said about the revision of the superintendent's contract. And I'm a little confused on whether there's a special meeting being called for that, or will that be conducted at the regular meeting in December? Those are my three comments and questions.
The hearing will be conducted during our December 6th meeting if we get approval back from the Executive County Superintendent. For the exact figures, I think we can refer that to Mr. Teig, and perhaps he can send you answer to your question.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board?
Sarah Aziz, I live in Monroe Township. At the last Curriculum Committee meeting, Board Member Carmen Alvarez said there were some pushback regarding the updated state standards for the health curriculum. In response, Supervisor Yael Snyder said, quote, "What has changed is really the standards, but if you walk into the classroom, the instruction that the teacher is delivering is the same as it has been, even though the state standards have changed. Why hasn't the classroom instruction adapted to the new state standards? What exact standards were referenced at the Curriculum Committee meetings for which teachers are not changing their instruction?" I'd like to stop the clock to see if you would respond.
Do you have any other questions?
I, I do.
Okay.
All right. Currently, Policy 0143 explicitly prohibits the Jamesburg Rep from voting to fill a vacancy on the Monroe Township Board of Education. Because the board failed to fill this vacancy within sixty-five days of the resignation of Karen Bierman, the decision was left up to the County Superintendent, Kyle Anderson. Mr. Anderson declined to fill this vacancy himself, even though he had the power to do so. Instead, he left it up to the board to fill this vacancy on October 18th, and at this meeting, Jamesburg Rep Michelle Scott voted to fill this vacancy. Regarding Policy 0143, Board Attorney Vito Gagliardi stated, quote, "The board wasn't acting pursuant to that policy or pursuant to its statutory authority, which had expired. So that policy cannot be used to guide the board because the sixty-five days had run out. The board is not acting pursuant to its statutory policy. The board is acting pursuant to the County Superintendent's Director Majority Rules. That's what you saw unfold here this evening. If this policy cannot be used to guide the board, why is the board changing this policy?" Those are my two questions.
Do you have any further comments?
No.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Are you going to answer any of those questions?
All of that information was answered in depth at the last meeting when you asked the same questions.
No, Ashley.
We're not going to, I have no more further comment on that.
The Curriculum Committee, nobody at the Curriculum Committee actually discussed which specific standards the teachers are not changing their instructions to, and I think the public has a right to know whether this district is abiding by the state standards. Are we abiding by the state standards or not?
Yes, we are, and that was made clear in the Curriculum Committee meeting. We are following the state standards.
So that, that means instruction is adapting to the new standards?
We are following the state standards as required by the law.
But it was said that, that the instruction was not being changed.
Now, that is not what was said.
It was. It says, and I quote, "If you walk into the classroom, the instruction the deliver, the teacher is delivering is the same as it has been, even though the state standards have changed." That was said at that meeting. So what particular standard was referred to because it wasn't mentioned at the meeting?
We are following all of the state standards.
Okay, so you're not going to tell me which standard was...
Dr. Lehman, are we following all of the state standards?
Which standard was referenced for which the instruction is not changing?
Are we following all of the state standards?
Yes, our standards are followed, correct. And what he means by, what Mr. Schneider meant by that is the instruction that, that's happening in our classrooms right now is consistent and meets the old standards, and the wording and the changes that were made in the new standards don't impact the day-to-day of what we've been doing. Just because the wording changes in the standard doesn't mean there has to be a radical overturning of what's instructed in the classroom. The way we were teaching and the concepts and the content we were teaching before the changes is the same content that we're teaching now.
I was suggesting there should be a radical change. I just thought there would be some change since the state standards had changed, but you're saying that there's no...
We are following the state standards.
I'm saying the instruction previous.
Okay.
And, and this is, the writers of the document are the instructors of the classes. It's consistent with what is expected and what will be instructed in the new standards. Oftentimes, they change wording. Oftentimes, they change phraseology. Things like this are updated every five, six years. We just had an update, and we'll see some new documents in the next year or so for updated language arts and math standards. One, and I can give you an example in math, just because we talked about it today. The way we look at money and we teach money is different than we taught money students like in kindergarten and first grade, how to, how to handle coins and things, because now we have debit cards and credit cards and things like that. So there has to be a different approach to teaching the content. It doesn't change how we count money. It doesn't change a quarter and a nickel and a dime, but we have to include just a different way to approach it. So that's an example.
Okay, yeah, but I wanted an example for the health curriculum, because I know it was controversial and there was some pushback. So have, have parents opted to, opt out of that curriculum? If so, how many?
The health curriculum is not on our agenda this evening.
It's, it was discussed at the Curriculum Committee meeting, so I thought it was fair to discuss it here.
No. Ms. Belko was...
Well, the, yes, excuse me, it was, it was discussed, the sixth, seventh, and eighth. It was part of that, it was part of that discussion. But the discussion as far as any changes, there are no changes.
No changes. There are no changes.
Because we've already been teaching to those standards that just were in place. So there are any document changes, and the full curriculum is available online. You can read it. I'm so sorry. So the, it was, if I may, I'm sorry.
Yes, Ms. Belko.
Out of turn. The curriculum did discuss the Phys Ed and Health curriculums that are out there. The standards that we are currently teaching to are the same standards we've been teaching to. They were previously and are now, meet the current standards that are out there, and all of the curriculum information is out there for you to, to view online. And we have all the points that, you know, we have covered all the points, and we are not teaching anything that is outside of the standards or wildly controversial.
Thank you.
And parents always have the option, sorry, parents always have the option to opt their students out of any particular section of curriculum that they don't, would, don't want their students to be taught in school. I would hope that those parents would teach those curriculum standards at home to their liking, but you always have the option to opt out.
Thank you, Ms. Belko.
Okay.
Do you have any further comments?
Yes, I do. Also, at the Policy Committee meeting, it was said that one of the justifications for changing Policy 0143 was that it was violated before in 2019, when the James, former Jamesburg Rep voted to fill a Monroe vacancy. So I don't think that a policy should be changed just because it was violated before. That means it's okay to violate it going forward. And secondly, you know, Jamesburg does not vote in Monroe Board elections. They don't pay taxes to the municipality, the Monroe municipality, and so I don't think they should be able to vote to fill a vacancy. And if it was done before, it was wrong, and if it's done recently, then it's wrong also. And so I, I don't support that. And, and I would like to know, does the, can the, can the board tell me a single other district that has allowed its sending district to vote to fill a vacancy on, on their board? Because I know what you said had happened before in 2019 here in Monroe, but has it happened in any other district where the sending district voted to fill a vacancy on the receiving district's board?
I will answer that. I spoke to New Jersey, New Jersey School Boards as well as, I know Mr. Payne did, reached out to New Jersey School Boards as well and spoke to their attorney. I know I was advised, I gave a detailed explanation of what we had going on in Monroe, and I was advised that the sending district should be able to vote on that item per the statute.
And the New Jersey School Boards told you that?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Payne, you were told that as well, correct?
Yes, they told me the same thing. I called them on the same issue, and the attorney of the day told me the same thing.
As well as when I spoke to the County Superintendent, they reached out to the attorney that the county uses. They were, I was advised that they felt that the statute gave the sending district the authority to vote in that as well. What I mentioned at the policy meeting was that in 2019, the policy was reaffirmed. If you go back and watch the board meeting of 2019, when they reaffirmed that, they spoke about going through the policy book and just pulling out all of the policies, looking at them again, reading them, and bringing them back to the board to reaffirm. I don't know what happened in that Policy Committee meeting that month because they were not videotaped. The public has no notes from that. That was all done in secret, behind closed doors. We did not, there's no record of the meeting, there's no videotape, so we cannot go back to see what their actual discussions were that evening. However, what I think could have happened was in 2017, when the State of New Jersey granted more rights to the sending districts, they updated the policy for sending districts in the policy guide, but they did not update the sending districts, or no, the policy to fill a board member's vacancy. So I don't know, perhaps that board forgot to, when they were reaffirming it, forgot to take that and match it to this, the statute that had changed in 2017. That could have been. They did not vote that evening in 2019 to add the item for the board, for the sending district not to be able to vote. What they did was just reaffirmed an old policy. So I, I don't know why they did that, but however, six months, seven months later, the Jamesburg representative, I would assume at the advice of the board attorney at the time, allowed the Jamesburg, or not allowed, because we don't allow a board member to do anything. Every board member at this table has their duty to fulfill their role as an elected official to the capacity they feel is best. I cannot stop anybody from voting. Ms. Allen can't stop anybody from voting. She has to call the roll. The board attorney cannot stop anybody from voting. So in 2019, the Jamesburg representative felt that he should vote on that item, and last month, our Jamesburg representative, at the guidance of her board attorney, as well as the advice of New Jersey School Boards and the County Superintendent, cast her vote.
Okay, so just to recap, it was, it was upon the advice of the Jamesburg attorney and the New Jersey School Board's attorney that the vote happened. Jamesburg's vote happened to fill the board vacancy, but it's not that, you could give me the name of another district in which this happened?
I worry about my duty to my community that elected me in Monroe Township, New Jersey. I do not go seeking out every other community and see what their Board of Eds do. That's why we have New Jersey School Boards as a resource, and when I asked them if they knew of any, they did not, they asked me...
Oh, so they didn't know of any district that had done this?
They didn't do the research into it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to address the board?
My name is Jay Sincoff. I have been a resident of Monroe since March of 1985. Now, I don't think this board was aware that Monroe Township Jewish Center Congregation at Skaya was vandalized with anti-Semitic.
Sarah, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this public forum is for items on our agenda. Is this referencing an agenda item?
It's referencing that this board has made no comment about the anti-Semitism and the scrolling of anti-Semitic remarks on Congress, on Congregation at Skaya at all. Therefore, this board has a problem. It had a problem three years, three and a half years ago.
Sarah, I'm going to have to stop you. This is not an agenda item on...
What on Zoom is to say Heil Hitler.
Sarah, I'm going to have to stop you.
Means there's a problem with this board with its prejudice.
This board is not prejudiced.
Yes, well, Peter Tofano said a very beautiful statement.
Sarah, I'm going to have to stop you. This is not the public forum for those comments. This is for agenda items only. If you would like to reference something on our agenda...
So when is the public forum where I can ask you why you have not made that comment?
It's during our second public forum.
When is that?
Toward the end of the agenda.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
But I've already made my statement.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Is there anybody else wishing to address the board? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public forum. We'll go to our next item, which is our Assistant Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'm going to keep it brief because we had a lot of recognition tonight, so congratulations to our staff and students for their achievements. I just wanted to mention, we had some tremendous athletic achievements as well. Our fall sports did outstanding this season. Again, we're going to recognize them at our next board meeting officially in an official capacity, but I just wanted to congratulate all of our student athletes and our coaches who had tremendous, outstanding season. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Lehman? All right, seeing none, we'll go to our next item on the agenda is our Superintendent's report and recommendations.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Once again, I keep on echoing in a positive way what's said here this evening. We got to celebrate a lot of our children, and we'll continue to celebrate a lot of our children as we continue at, at every board meeting. Some of the comments I would like to make, I had the pleasure of going from school to school for Halloween. Halloween is a very highly celebrated event here in Monroe and has been for many years. The children just look forward to it, and I have to recommend, I have to comment, rather, on the principals and the entire school district's culture in each building, how they go above and beyond to really include the children and the great time that they have. It's just a lot of fun. It was a little chilly this year, but we did have nice weather, which was good. We had just a sprinkle of rain, and it was all positive, and the children just love it. And I think it's so exciting that it's a culture that's been here for, oh my goodness, 20 years so far, and I hope it just continues. That was a lot of fun. Couple other comments I would like to make is that we are very fortunate that on the agenda this evening, we have donations from two groups of parents, both moms and dads, one through cheer and the other one through baseball, that have gone above and beyond to raise money so that they can give back to their community with the bullpen for the baseball, as well as for additional mats, which will allow our cheerleaders to practice not only at the high school, but as the middle school as well, and we have found space for that. So we're very proud of that, and I did want to mention that, because the community is who we are with our kids, and all the wonderful things that they do are just very exciting. So I didn't want that to go unnoticed, because our agendas sometimes have a lot of details, and depending upon what you're reading, it may have been something that you didn't, your eye didn't catch. I would like to take a few moments, even though we are going to be doing a fall acknowledgement for our sports, as well as our marching bands. There are a few things that I did ask Mr. Barrandica to put together for me, because I think some of these things are so pertinent that they cannot go unnoticed. We just had a great rah-rah season, and I just have to highlight, you know, especially moms and dads that watch it, the best feeling in the world is acknowledging your greatest accomplishment, which are our kids. So on that note, boys soccer was crowned back-to-back GMC County champs. Girls soccer were crowned GMC County champs for the first time in school history. Boys cross-country were crowned back-to-back GMC County champs and won the Central Jersey Group Four championship for the first time in school history. Man Patel, a senior, and Matt Lucas, a senior, advanced to the meet of champions as individuals. Girls volleyball avenged their GMC County final by defeating Oldbridge in states. They were crowned Central Jersey Group Four champions for the first time in school history. In middle school athletics, the girls volleyball had an undefeated season. And we are going to formally acknowledge, as I said, all of the teams during our Board of Education meetings as we continue forward, but those were just unbelievable highlights, especially when I hear "first time ever." All we can hope is that next year, instead of saying "first time ever," we'll say, "for our second year in a row, we'd like to acknowledge," so that's what's really exciting. Additionally, for those of you that may or may not know, our National Signing Day, which has to do with sports for the children that are signing for different Group One, Two, Three, or Four schools that are going, that did occur while we were closed, and we did want to give it the proper recognition. So we have a National Signing Day, which is the period for the student athletes to sign a binding national letter of intent for a collegiate sport. It opened on November 8th, 2023, school was not in session, but it goes all the way, for those who may not be aware, to August 1st of 2024. The athletic department will host a signing day on November 21st in the Monroe Township High School gymnasium at 2:30 to highlight a few athletes who look to continue their athletic careers at collegiate level. The student athletes, coaches, and family members have been invited, and we look forward to celebrating those amazing accomplishments. The athletic department is finalizing the list of student athletes to be honored. Please look out on social media for our posts highlighting the event. We are getting better and better at acknowledging our children on social media. We want our social media to be all about the good, all about the positive, and all about celebrating our children. We want to just, people are moving forward with positive comments, and that is why I wanted to take the time before I do my formal report. Continuing in that avenue, I do want to acknowledge that while we were also on our, what I'm referring to is on our member break, we did have our Veterans Day celebration. Never a day shall ever go by that we do not thank the service of those that have sacrificed so much for the great country of the United States of America, so that was acknowledged. Additionally, we also had the celebration of Diwali. We are a community of many different groups of people, and it is a very big holiday, and it's a very positive holiday, is the holiday of light. I know I'm just summarizing, but I'm gonna use the word "light" and "happiness," so I did want to acknowledge that this evening. And lastly, one of the things that I noticed for the first time this year, and I did send out also a Blackboard Connect regarding this, is that World Kindness Day was on Monday. And one of the things that I have really become dedicated to in my own observation is, we need to be kind. You know, one of the things, you know, we all said, not that we all, but many of us sent out holiday cards. I'm one of those people that have been doing it for many, many, many years, and now I've added kindness. It's always health, happiness, and peace. Well, you know what? It's health, happiness, peace, and kindness. I can only hope that those words resonate with our community, and remember that we are here for the children. So that was just some comments that I wanted to make, and on that note, I will continue. And, under our 10-member vote, it has recommended the board approve the attached personnel items A through M.
Can we get a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Ms. Allen, maybe we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Gorham?
Yes.
Ms. DePayne?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Under the nine-member vote, it has recommended the board approve the attached personnel items N through AK.
Motion.
Second.
Is there a second? Are there any questions? Ms. Ratner?
I just had a quick question about the Apple Garth physical education that is there, because I noticed it's, you know, one class, one class, and there's a lot of teachers listed.
What item number?
Sorry, this is for letter A, J, and it's numbers three through-
Ten.
Ten. And I was just curious what that's for, is it for additional class? As I see it, it's a resignation replacement, but is it in lieu of a teacher for now until? I guess that's sort of my question, what it's for.
Yes. Dr. Chanley, I'm sorry.
Certainly. So what has happened was, the sessions and the amount of children always plays the role in how, who you hire, and whether it's full-time or part-time. We had a part-time employee there. The part-time employee, we're very happy, was able to get a full-time job in another district. So we really tried to think out of the box, different ways that we can go ahead and fill that position. We were even working with the high school to see if that would work. And the end result was the additional individuals getting the various different amounts of money separated, so that would allow for the proper teaching of those children.
And these are all physical education teachers from other schools in our district that are listed?
No, they are.
No, no, because you don't have to at the elementary level.
Okay.
So yes, certification plays a role when you go six through 12. Certification is different in the elementary level.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Allen, maybe we have a roll call, please? Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on letter P and letter A H.
Okay. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. DePayne?
Yes.
Mr. Gorham?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Under Board Action 10-member vote, it has recommended the board approve the attached Board Action items A through M.
Make it a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? All right, are there any questions? Seeing none, maybe we have a roll call, please? Yes. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Gorham?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Um, yes, vote no on letter F, recuse on letter A for Mr. Snyder. Sorry, for letter F, that's for the 0143.
All right, Ms. DePayne?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Under Board Action 9-member vote, it has recommended the board approve the attached Board Action items N through T.
Make it a motion?
Motion. Second.
Are there any questions? All right, maybe we have a roll call, please? Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePayne?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on letter N and no for Mr. Ratner.
Mr. Gorham?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I want to just end my report by congratulating once again all of our staff, as well as our recipients, our student recipients, and that concludes the Superintendent's report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Chanley. The next item on the agenda is our Business Administrator's report. Ms. Allen?
It's recommended that Board Action items A through I be approved by consent roll call under a 10-member vote. Make it a motion?
Second.
Are there any questions? Ms. Ratner?
Just one about the comprehensive maintenance plan, and I apologize, I just noticed this, but I see that there's certain items that I would think might be one-time items that are in each of the years, replacing HVAC equipment at Woodland Millie Apple Garth. And so I was just curious, is that we're replacing certain elements during each of those years? Or is it, if it's not completely handled in the first year, then it will be addressed in the following year? So that was just my only question about that.
Ms. Allen? That would be Mr. Teague's question.
Dr. Chanley, you want to answer?
So what happens is, Mr. Teague puts together a comprehensive plan and all the items that need to be addressed. Quite often, you are correct, quite often there'll be things that'll be listed, and then due to financial constraints, they may not be fulfilled. So therefore, it becomes a plan of what we move forward and the things that we address.
If I may make a comment, Ms. Gerby. So I know somebody had mentioned in the public forum that the amount for Apple Garth is only 107,000. My understanding of the comprehensive maintenance plan, and Dr. Chanley, you can correct me if this is wrong, we do this every year, and it is, it covers the necessary repair and maintenance, but not the major capital projects. So that 107,000 is, is an estimate for the regular maintenance that is, regular comprehensive maintenance that is done in these buildings. But the project that we are all talking about, the roof, is a capital project that has its own project and money allocated to it, and it is in millions of dollars, and you're right, it is not 107,000. I wish it was, I wish it was 107,000 dollars. I just wanted to make that comment right now.
Sure. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Ms. Allen, maybe we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Gorham?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePayne?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is our President's report. So with next week being Thanksgiving, I want to start out by saying thank you to our staff and our administration for all of their hard work, making our district continue to do the great things we hear so much about. Thank you to our students who continue to show us how wonderful they truly are. Tonight was just a small snapshot of the amazing things our students are doing, both inside and outside the classroom. And thank you to our board members. Being on the Board of Education is a volunteer-elected position, and we all take time out of our very busy lives to serve our community. I would also like to thank the members of our township government and our mayor for their continued willingness to collaborate with our school district. Back in April, the school administration, myself, Ms. Beerman, met with the mayor, town council leadership, and the members of town administration. We discussed the emergent issues and needs with Apple Garth School and talked through possible shared services agreement to help the district make the much necessary infrastructure repairs. We have been reporting since July that the district sent a detailed list of needs to the town for their consideration. When the district received word that the state approved the regular operating district grant, the ROD grant, for infrastructure repairs to Apple Garth School, as well as the $1 million allocated in the state budget for repairs to Apple Garth School, we were very excited but quickly realized that the district would be short $5 million for the repairs not covered under the ROD grant. The state only gives 40% of a project, and the district needs to come up with the other 60%. And you cannot have the 40% from the state unless you can show that you can cover the whole project. With that, district administration reached out to the town administration as requested, and requested to meet. After that meeting, the district was asked to submit a shared services agreement and did so. The agreement is with the township attorneys at this point, and it should be finalized hopefully by our December 6th meeting, where the board would be asked to vote on it. I want to read the press release that was issued yesterday by our mayor. Monroe Mayor Stephen Delina, in support of the Monroe Schools, is moving forward to provide a matching grant to ensure critical repairs are undertaken at Apple Garth Elementary School. Without $5 million in matching funds from the municipality, the school district would lose $4 million in state grants. Quote, Monroe's municipal government has worked closely and partnered with the Board of Education to benefit students and taxpayers in the past, Mayor Delina said. While I just learned about the Board of Ed application and recent award, I am prepared to step up again and help, adding the necessary funds for the 50% state match. This is the ideal opportunity for the Board of Education to resolve long overdue and much-needed school repairs with less burden on the Monroe taxpayers. The mayor noted this is a rare opportunity, as the state has not offered these matching grants for school repairs for a decade. Quote, I am committed to a shared services agreement in partnership with the Board of Education to ensure millions of dollars of state education capital grant dollars are not returned to the state and given out elsewhere, Mayor Delina said. There is absolutely no way this municipality will let $5 million in state grants slip through our fingers. Monroe School officials recently received word from the state that the district could receive a $4 million regular operating ROD matching grant for the Apple Garth Elementary School if a local match is identified for the $10 million project. The school district is also able to secure a separate $1 million state matching grant in the 2003-24 state budget. The Board of Education must secure the local match of $5 million for the $10 million project or decline the award. Apple Garth Elementary School, which was built in 1936, currently serves almost 450 students. This project would replace a 50-year-old roof and a 70-year-old HVAC system, both identified as critical repairs by the Monroe Board of Education. To secure the state funds, Mayor Delina will be calling upon the town council to support a shared services agreement with the school district. Under the plan, the municipality would issue bonds to pay off the debt. Future taxpayers will contribute. The school district's professionals have informed us that this project will ensure that Apple Garth Elementary School can continue to serve Monroe students for the foreseeable future, Mayor Delina said, noting that the municipality is able to borrow funds at advantageous long-term interest rates with a double A-plus bond rating. So again, I would like to thank our town officials and mayor for being open to collaborate with our school district. We are one community, and this is a wonderful outcome from working together and collaborating together. And that is the end of my report. Sure. Dr. Chanley?
Thank you. My apologies, I would be remiss if I forgot. Rochelle Epstein, she has been here as a parrot at Oak Tree School for 16 years. I like to always make the comment that we're excited about all falcons that go ahead and fly on their newest journey, so I wanted to make sure that I gave a shout-out to her for all of her hard work. Our parrot professionals work very hard with our children, like our teachers, and we are very excited for her to begin her new journey on her retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is other Board of Education business. Does anyone have any business before the board? Yes, Mr. Payne?
I attended the 2023 School Board Convention in Atlantic City, and it was wonderful. Between the speakers, the children participating, the different bands, and I kind of saw a little bit, because I was going to all the sessions and the different workshops that they had. So just briefly, a couple of workshops I went to, Your Budget in Voters' Hands was presented by Westfield Board of Ed, and it was called The Tale of Two Questions. I think I mentioned it in the Finance Committee meeting. The superintendent there, when I actually went, the superintendent said, when he hired him and he accepted, he didn't realize it was a $6 million deficit in that Board of Ed, in that district. So he was faced with a pretty big task. So they went, and he was wonderful, wonderful speaker. Westfield has 5,900 students, 900 staff, and is a pre-K to 12 district. They said, they started talking about the state of the school funding when the superintendent announced that they would need to put the vote in April with two-question option. They didn't want to cut staff or programs, so that's what, if you don't want to cut staff or programs, you put it in April with a two-question option. They also had the support of the community. They went out to the community, made changes to save money and to keep their heads above water, but their main priority was student achievement. So the first question contains the budget at 2%. And the second question was what they wanted in order to keep the district running smoothly. So in the second question, you have to list what you actually want, what the percentage is. So they had about a list of eight or 10 different items. So they started in January with the presentation, discussed it all, board meetings, and they had to figure out what can be added to the budget in order to go out to the voters for their support. The second question was very detailed on wants and needs. If question two fails, you cannot add what was in that question for one year. The school board and the county helped them in this process. I'll go brief, I'll go more. I went to effective communication, words and body languages for board members. I attended this presentation to, you know, just, well, I actually knew one of the presenters, so I went to hear him present. They talked about being consistent, open, transparent, and how decision-making process should include the diverse voices of our community. They mentioned the process of going out to everyone in the community, and they also mentioned about including our students, not only in their reports, but including them to stay for the meetings, thinking that maybe our seniors and juniors will learn from it and go back to their schools, and I thought that was a great idea. But they might have something to tell us. was a great idea, but they might have something to tell us. We don't know. They're in the schools every day. So that was one of the items that I thought was really, really interesting. They also said, "You must leave your ego at the door and focus on your responsibility." And, and then was, there's, when there's bad behavior and distrust on the board, the board should go back for training. That was a big thing. They said, "Training, training, training." So if there's any issues on the board, they recommended calling school boards, which offers a lot, a lot of trainings, and have them come back and train. I mean, there's no, there's no problem in doing that. Also, on transgender, I went to a transgender workshop, which was really interesting. I learned a lot of different things about how the different pronouns are out now, and how the student can talk to the teacher or the counselor, but they don't have the right to go back to the parent, because they don't know what's happening in that child's home. They don't know if the parent would be receiving of it, or if the child would be beaten or actually hurt if they went home with that information. So it's a trust, a very big trust issue, and it was talked about. I went to two of them on that. One, I went on, they said they're learning, they have a learning loss, LGBTQ+ from COVID, mental health, parents, and self-resistance to bullying. And when the improvement is made in our schools, and our environment, and the home, they tend to come up, their grades come up, their emotional well-being comes up. So we, they, we have to make them as safe as possible in our schools. That was the main thing. I also attended on Thursday the Fall School Law Forum, which was wonderful. They, I'll just read the items that discussed. Case law and legislative updates, current issues and collective negotiations and labor law, health benefits, employee contributions, new sick leave law, dealing with staff shortages, signing bonuses, legal consideration for the district, boosting starting salaries and equal pay under the Act NJSA ten, colon, five, dash, twelve. Retired teachers allows districts to hire retired teachers after six months if it's a critical need and they cannot fill that spot in your district. So you can go after those teachers now that, say you need somebody in these macroeconomic classes in your AP and you can't find one, you can bring back a teacher that's retired. So I think, I think now it's a year. I'm not sure if it changed to, if it was six months or a year, that the retired teacher can come back. I also, David Rubens spoke about, his topic was Rest in Peace Affirmative Action. It was basically having college admissions not discriminated when choosing students to be admitted to colleges, which has been going on for years. So now they're going to try to stop it and put a policy in place regarding that. School law parliamentary procedures, they went over Robert's Rules, which was interesting. And they had a panel of four attorneys, and one was a transgender attorney, to discuss the legality of not outing students in schools. So, and went to call a parent and things like that. So I'm telling, it was a wonderful learning experience for me. I thanked the board for letting me go. And I took my husband with me, since he's retired. So he was, he was helpful in a lot of situations, and especially packing up the luggage to go home, because I was in all day on Thursday, and he was just wandering around. But I, I want to tell you that if you have a chance to go and you're a new board member, grab it. On any of the educational opportunities that they offer, grab it and do it. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Does anybody have any other business before the board?
Ms. Ratner?
Ms. Ratner?
This may be the first time someone's made it longer in other board business than me, so, but we'll see. I don't know, maybe. All right. So anyway, first of all, I also got to attend the New Jersey School Board Association workshop. There were, you know, as Ms. DePain said, there were some great sessions. I've always been a huge fan of professional development myself, and so I really enjoyed going to those, as well as seeing all of the different exhibitors and hearing about some of the things that we could do in our district. Some of them were really exciting to me. And also just sort of networking with the other board members from the other districts and sort of hearing things that work for them, and sort of just sharing ideas. So it was definitely fantastic. I also wanted to just take a moment and congratulate all of the middle school and high school athletics teams, as well as our marching band, for their successes in the fall. It's truly great to see all of the accomplishments. Also, taking a second, as a proud parent, as well as a board member, congratulate the middle school Falcon Jazz Band and Chamber Singers, who I found out were selected as one of few groups in New Jersey to perform at the State Music Educators Association Conference in February. It's, it's extra exciting for me, because not only is my husband the conductor for the Falcon Jazz Band, but now my daughter is in both groups as the bass player for the Jazz Band and a vocalist in Chamber Singers. I think, Ms. Bora, you got to go last year with percussion ensemble. And I used to go to this convention all the time as a music teacher myself, so I'm really excited to go down there and watch. Let's see. I wanted to congratulate all of the candidates who were elected or re-elected last week, and also thank everyone who put themselves out there, who is willing to volunteer to serve our community. I also, following Ms. Skirby's announcement, wanted to thank Mayor Steven Delena, Council President Miriam Cohen, as well as the council members, Michael Markle, Rupert Siegel, Charles D. Piero, and Terry Van Zura for their commitment to the schools, with the five billion dollar investment being made towards Applegarth. I hope we can all continue to work together for the best interests of our school district and our community. I was selected by NJSA to be a part of the Resolution Subcommittee, which reviews the resolutions that are going to be heard by the Delegate Assembly. This was actually a surprise to me, because I wasn't aware, but apparently it is a subsection of the members of the Legislative Committee, and it's based mostly on legislative district the members represent. So I was glad to participate in that, and I'll share a little bit more about that coming up. And then finally, I made it close. I had the opportunity to speak, to visit Mill Lake and the Monroe Township Middle School for American Education Week, and just because that happens to be where my, my children are. And I just wanted to say, it's truly amazing to see our staff in their element, doing what they do, and then just seeing students enjoying themselves while learning. And so I just wanted to thank everyone, our staff members, from the teachers, secretaries, custodians, administrators, everyone who's involved, paraprofessionals. I probably shouldn't have started listing, because then I'll forget somebody, but everyone who's involved in, you know, helping our kids thrive for doing what they do. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kate, I just want to clarify, though, one thing you said. I know you thanked the entire council. The council hasn't voted yet, so I just want to be clear that the council has not voted. So yes, we do appreciate-
For their future support.
Well, yes, and we would hope so. But I, I just want, I, I don't want it to be displayed that we, that we're announcing that they've approved this, because they have not, they, they have not gotten the agreement, our board has not gotten the agreement. I mean, the essence of the agreement is shared services, you know, the five million dollar use of the building. But there is the formality that it does have to be presented to them and, and to our board as well for a vote. So I just wanted to be clear that the council has not voted yet on that. Anybody else? Ms. Belko?
Yes, thank you. One, I want to thank everyone for their service. This is a season of thanks, so I just want to thank everybody. We all do sit here, month after month, different committee meetings, and it, you know, it takes us away from our family and our homes. But I also wanted to thank the administration and our board leadership for the tenacity and the, and the stick-to-it-iveness to go and speak with the mayor and make sure that we follow through on things that we have said that we are going to do, because we really had, you know, we, we, we heard the, we heard the people. We couldn't get the referendum. We have to do something. We have to place that. I want to thank Mayor Delena for supporting this and for going forward with it. And I hope that when that agreement comes, we certainly will have, you know, we will have some success with that, and that everything is together, and we're really going to move forward and do the things that, you know, we should have been able to do over the last so many years. These ROD grants have not been available. So thanks to the legislature for opening up these ROD grants again, and for Mr. Tagg, for, you know, those things are, grants are not easy to fill out and do all that, and I don't know if it was him, or I know we have a grant writer, so I'm sure that that person helped as well. With that, I want to welcome you to the seat next to me at the table. Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
And we appreciate that. Mr. Payne, thank you for that great report on the education at the, at the convention. And just, you know, thank you to everybody for, you know, for what we do here. And we're, you know, again, like I said in the curriculum meeting, admitting notes, we're doing great things here, and we're really making some strides. And so I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bora?
I'm going to continue on that note, because that is such a big news, the collaboration between the township and the Board of Ed. I just wanted to highlight a fact that became obvious in one of the BGNT meetings, when Mr. Tagg pointed out that he's very diligent about the ROD grants, and he, he does file them regularly. And there was a point in history where we had received a ROD grant, and it was not sufficient, because ROD grant always gets us forty percent off the actual capital project. And if, for those of you who heard that meeting, there was a point in time when we got the grant, but the board did not have the money. We had two years. We didn't do what we did this time, and that's what is different this time. We got the grant, but we let it expire, because we did not work on collaborating with the town. And so I would do what Ms. Belko just did, give credit to the administration and the board leadership for pursuing this, for working. And I would like to give a huge thanks to the township administration and the mayor for making sure that this time, the grant money that we're getting actually gets used, because it is so, we are in dire needs, and they heard us, and they are, they, they do have the same feeling like us, that this money that the state is giving us should not go to waste. And I'm glad and thankful that the township is working with us, and fingers crossed that the council passes it and we get the opportunity, all of us board members here get the opportunity to vote yes on it next month, fingers crossed. It, it's the season of giving thanks, and for that, I am thankful that I'm part of a board that is making that big step ahead. I do also want to piggyback on what Ms. Payne said. It was an amazing conference. We had some great sessions. My favorite, and I did quite a few, and I also redid my governance, too, because I had done it remotely before, and I always liked doing sessions in person, so I took it twice. And it was about finance, so I needed to do it twice. I'm not a finance person. But my favorite session was by far the session on artificial intelligence in education. It's hard to do this, but I was able to not just learn for this role, but I was even able to take away things that I could use in my work life. So I'm very excited about what I learned. I do have to give Dr. Chanley a little blurb on that, so that, because that person didn't have a presentation that I could share. So I do, I promise you, Dr. Chanley, I will send you what I learned, so that you could find some use for it in the district. And, Dr. Chanley, I also want to commend the administration and you personally for acknowledging the big Hindu festival of Diwali. Our student demographic, a large part of our student demographic celebrates it. It was on Sunday, but I appreciate your recognition of the holiday and, you know, you know, celebrating the diversity in our student demographic. It's a big day for the South Asian population, and it's a big festival, and this is a season of festivals. And with that, I want to thank everybody here for working together to do good things for student success. We have good days and we have bad days. We just need to focus on the good days and keep moving ahead on accomplishing great things for our students. Welcome, Mr. Gorm. I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Alvarez?
I have something real quick. Last week, Mrs. Fabiano and I attended a community event where we happened to run into Hepi Thacker, who isn't here today, and two of her friends. And we spent some time talking to them. We were so impressed by these young ladies, two of which have created their own nonprofit to serve underserved girls in shelters. They enjoy their role here on the board, and they have ideas where they want to expand and possibly be able to bring forward some student concerns as well, with, if that's okay with the rest of the board. They've been doing research and conducting surveys, and they feel, you know, that would be beneficial for the student population of our school district.
Yes. Our, our student board reps are always welcome to bring up any issues or concerns from their student population. That is one of the roles that they serve, is to go around to their population in the high school here and bring back any concerns. And I know last year, they did bring back a few. They reached out to myself. I brought it to Dr. Chanley, and it was, it was corrected and, and taken care of prior to, so, so they do, they can present anything they would like here at the board that is a, a student concern or a student success. Okay. I hope they're watching.
And if I want to add something on that?
Sure.
If I may. And also, I meet with them, sorry, I meet with them as a liaison monthly. It just so happens that our student board representative is, is one of the people that meets with us, and it's really an opportunity. I allow the agenda to be purely what they want to bring up. So a lot of times, it's very positive, and they're excited to share great things, dances, activities, and a lot of times, it is, it is about concerns. So I, I do agree with you that it's very important that they have a voice. So they have an opportunity to have a voice there as representatives, and we do that all the way from sixth through twelfth grade. There's a representative for every grade, at least two, actually, and then also here as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gorm?
Yes, I want to say that I was very impressed by the students that volunteer their time over the summer, you know, eight o'clock in the morning, doing the things that they did. And as a former, former civics teacher, it's really nice to see students giving back to their community. And I can imagine how they felt when they went back to their elementary schools, and they were reading to maybe younger siblings or other, you know, people in the community that they knew. The Boy Scouts, the Eagle Scouts, the work that they do. I mean, we have fantastic kids here in Monroe, so it's really nice to see that. And I'm very proud of the board for recognizing them.
Thank you. Anybody else? And just one thing to piggyback on some of the sessions. I was also at the New Jersey School Boards Conference. It was an amazing few days of really talking to, networking, speaking to other board members, understanding some of the issues going on in some of the other districts. One session I know myself, Dr. Chanley and Ms. Bora attended, was called Portrait of a Graduate. And it was, I wanted to bring that up tonight. It was, a lot of districts now, as they go through their strategic planning process, which I know, I think, coming up, maybe in the new year, we're going to start looking at that and, and, and starting our process for a new strategic plan. They come up with this portrait of a graduate, and it's basically, what, what should your graduate look like coming out of high school? You should be a good communicator. You should be a good community member. Critical thinker. So it had all of these things, and it's, it's what you, what the community, what the district, and what the students see themselves as, what should they be leaving the high school? It was, it was a powerful presentation, and it sparked conversation among the three of us for quite a while that afternoon. So I'm looking forward to seeing how we can incorporate that into our district, too. And, and what Dr. Chanley, you know, during the presentation, she leaned over, and she said to us, she goes, "We already do that. We already do that. We already do that." We are in our curriculum, building good speakers, good communicators, good citizens, you know, teaching character education. We're doing that. But what this is, it puts it into a graphic and into a presentation almost, to say to the community, this is what our graduates should look like. This is what we, what, this is what they possess leaving our, our high school.
Brand image of a Monroe-
Brand image, yes.
Brand image of a Monroe High School graduate.
So that was, that was one, that was one session that I attended that really stuck with me, and I know that we're going to look into doing that. So does anybody have anything else for other board business? No, seeing none, we'll go to our second public forum. If anybody has anything they would like to address the board with, please come to the podium, state your name and your municipality.
Jay Sincoff, resident of Monroe since nineteen eighty-five.
Good evening.
Good evening. It is said that those who are silent acquiesce and agree. When those who don't say anything and they stand up for nothing, that is what they happen to be. Because when you are silent about antisemitism, or what happened at the Monroe Township Jewish Center, which this board did, except for one member who said she was saying it as a non-member, all right, that says you agree with what was written on the temple walls. So why is silence a terrible thing? Because it allowed people to acquiesce and say, "I don't have to remember. I don't have to know anything that's going on." to know anything that's going on." That's why we had Nazism, that's why we had fascism, that's why we had a fight, World War II, that's why 21 million people died in Auschwitz and Dachau because people were silent. So I would like to praise our mayor who said something and I'd like to say you were silent. Do you have a reaction?
I would just like to say on behalf of the board, I don't think anybody sitting at this table agreed or would condone any action that was taken at that, at the Jewish Center. There is no place in our community for that type of hate. It is, it was terrible.
You were silent when a child three years ago said Heil Hitler dealing with a Zoom meeting. Yes, you referred it to the police, but you did nothing in the schools. By being silent, you acquiesce.
We were not silent then. It was under a different superintendent, I believe, when that took place. Dr. Chanley, you were the principal.
It doesn't matter. The board was silent.
The board was not silent.
And with what happened?
I'm telling you right now, this board of education does not condone that behavior.
So say something that you disagree with what happened at the temple instead of being silent and you're already too late. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to address the board?
Your Board Policy 0167 focuses on public participation in board meetings and it allows, quote, "for public comment on educational issues," including, quote, "comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the district." At the meeting last month, October, during the second session, one of our residents made essentially a campaign speech soliciting votes to become a representative in the State Assembly. Out of his four minutes of allowed time, he made one comment that referred to the schools, basically saying, "If I get elected, I'll do everything I can to get extra funding for the schools." But everything else he said had nothing to do with the schools. It was point blank a political campaign speech. This speaker was not said to be out of order. I think this was a dangerous road that you allowed to begin and I hope in the future that we don't have more political speeches of a partisan nature being made at these board meetings. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Sarah Aziz, I live in Monroe Township. I want to know if there's a possibility that the Monroe Township Board of Ed unlawfully redacted information obtained in an Oprah request. There was an email written by DOE official Felicia Hall to Sherry Chanley about aid to Applegoth School. The same email regarding state aid was requested from both the New Jersey Department of Education and the Monroe Township Board of Education, yet only the Monroe Township Board of Education redacted a specific paragraph. This paragraph written by Felicia Hall was redacted by the Monroe BOE. And in this paragraph, Ms. Hall states, "As previously stated, the district cannot award any construction contracts before you have executed your grant agreement with the NJSDA. If you do award any construction contracts before executing the grant agreement with the NJSDA, you forfeit receiving any funds for your project." The New Jersey School Development Authority is called the NJSDA. This is the state agency responsible for fully funding and managing the new construction, modernization, and renovation of school facilities projects. Why did the Monroe BOE censor this paragraph that was not censored by the New Jersey Department of Education? Has Monroe failed to execute its grant agreement with the NJSDA? If so, is it in danger of forfeiting receipt of a necessary state grant? That's, that's my question.
Thank you.
So do you have an explanation as to why your custodian of records suspended?
We would have to go and ask her that question.
Okay, well, previously our Oprah officer was a business administrator with a CPA license, an MBA, and years of training in Oprah. And our current Oprah secretary lacks those credentials and had no prior experience with Oprah. Our district is already embroiled in an Oprah lawsuit. Why are we paying $45,000 for a part-time Oprah secretary when nearly every other school district has their business administrator serve as the Oprah officer at no extra charge? I mean, considering the budget is so tight and we're going over the 2% cap, I don't know why the board would not consider saving money in this way, especially since we're already involved in an Oprah lawsuit and the Department of Education is not redacting things that we're redacting.
We are not involved in an Oprah lawsuit as far as the Board of Education and the administration is aware.
Okay, so there's been no lawsuits filed against the board?
There was a lawsuit and the Board of Education was found to be correct in the way it processed the Oprah.
Oh, okay.
Costing the district, I believe, a very large sum of money in legal fees.
Okay, but you have no explanation as to why this particular paragraph was redacted by the Monroe Board of Education, but not the New Jersey Department of Education?
We would have to go and speak to the Oprah Secretary about that.
Okay, thank you.
And no, we are not in violation of anything and we are not in violation of losing the grant money that we got. So that, those are false allegations that are not true. So no, we are not in violation of anything. Is there anybody else wishing to speak to the board?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pradeep Mehlam, Monroe Township. So we talked about like AP and getting into their honor role and everything, but if I look at our high school AP information page, it just have the last date of registration and exam dates. That's it. We don't have much information. But when you compare with either Princeton, South Brunswick, Manalapan, Freehold, or any neighboring state, neighboring school districts, they have when is the start date, when is the actual end date. Our end date is like 10:20, but school boards allow us, anybody to register without any penalties until like 11:20. And that's like another, like the window that is cutting off for the people. And there is no much information about like, if a kid has taken like honors chemistry and next year he wants to write AP chemistry or like the same with others outside of the class, he's not taking the AP class, but he want to challenge himself and write these exams. And that information is also missing and the criteria is also missing. It's always like goes to one person's decision, either AP coordinator or that particular teacher. So we would like to have more information on that page so that it will encourage the kids to take more APs, not just this year, but the following years. Like if they, if they finish the honors with 90 or 95, they can take it, usually they can take it, obviously. So that's all for me for today.
All right, good evening. I mean, thank you for your, thank you for your comments. Dr. Lehman, perhaps that's something that we could look at incorporating more on the website, the AP information with the testing?
Sure, I'll reach out to Dr. Higgins and Dr. Cattelli and we can better organize and communicate and even celebrate this achievement, you know, of our bronze award. And it's notable that we had two gold awards and a bronze. So in theory.
In theory, like if we go a little bit up in that branch, right? So we will go into the gold.
And the bronze award is really a function of, many of our AP courses have been capped out. So it's a matter of what we've been working on for some time is increasing sections in some of our most popular areas, which would then allow more students to engage in AP exams, which would then increase that bronze to a silver and things like that.
You don't need to increase the sections as well. You can allow the kids that are like willing to take more, you can encourage them as well. Like if they, if they fill the criteria, then you can encourage them without taking the class as well.
So self-study students, self-study students wouldn't count towards that, those credentials and things. That definitely is something we want to do in terms of offering access to students who may be prepared to take the exam, but they didn't necessarily enroll in the course. We want that opportunity for those students. We certainly will advertise that. But in terms of the, you know, the achievement we're looking at, that would be students enrolled in the course and taking the exam.
Got it, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Sarah Shama, Monroe Township. Quick question for you. Can you remind me what was on our referendum that failed, the last one? What were the bullet points?
Each of the projects?
Yeah, if you don't mind, just quickly.
So it was an expansion to the middle school for providing classrooms, which would then eliminate the trailers that are there. Additionally, it would increase the size of the cafeteria twofold. So it would be not a cost of increasing the actual kitchen. The kitchen would remain the same, but it would be almost like a makeshift hallway, for lack of a better term, because it's not actually a hallway, that would allow two sides of cafeteria to open up the amount of children that could eat there. I'm just trying to think what else we were, pardon me?
Addition to the high school.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking middle school. I want to just finish the middle school in my brain for a second. Is there anything I'm leaving out at the middle school?
The parking lot was going to change.
Oh, the parking lot, that's right. We were going to change the parking lot to allow for more parking spaces and the way it's currently built, it doesn't, it's not the highest level of proficiency. So of course, we're not going to go ahead and change it now, but if there would have been a referendum, that would have been one of the things. Thank you very much, Ms. Bora, I did forget that. At the high school, there would be an addition of a total of, I know there was 12 classrooms. Originally, we were at six and then we doubled it. There would be a, what is the structure that we call that building?
Butler building.
Butler building, Butler style building, which would then allow the gymnasium or extra, extra physical education classrooms would be in that area. And then we'd be able to utilize the current physical education classroom space for additional classrooms. And then, of course, Applegoth would be refurbishing, rejuvenating, and bringing to, bringing to the status that we feel is appropriate for our children. And that's just off the top of my head.
Of course, yeah.
Oh, the addition to Applegoth.
We're adding on to the left, left-hand side of the school facing, correct?
New cafeteria.
Towards the left, right. And that would be a new cafeteria.
And was the roof part of the referendum too for Applegoth or no?
Oh, yes.
Okay, great. So that was, is now taken care of and can be removed.
And the HDAC and the boilers.
That's all, so that was now part of this $10 million between the grants and what the town is being willing to.
That's correct.
Okay, great. So that's a really great thing to have that removed from.
Very exciting.
The issues that we have listed. So now it's to tackle the rest of them. So what is our game plan now to tackle the next, the other three big issues? I'll say three big, meaning the three different schools, or two different schools, I guess.
So just off the top of my head, just to give you like really, really brief, so the conversations that we've been having as administrative team and working also with Mr. Take is that the middle school is now looking at their numbers because numbers are going down. So they're looking at their needs in the structure of the building. They're also looking at the schedule because that's always a consideration. And at the high school level, they are looking at the schedule sections, sections. And the key is, we've had great success with children who want to take advantage of the alternative pathways to physical education. So we're in a much better shape. I believe that we've added computer science classes, we've added additional vocational classes, which is very important and part of the vision for the district. So a lot of strategies that we are looking into to see what can be done, what utilization of space can be done and what changes we can make based within the space that we have.
So basically, it's working with our current situation. Now, but what about bringing money in to create the additions that you're looking for? Is there other grants and things that we're able to navigate or not yet?
Well, the only thing that we know is that we, and this is purely just from, from having conversations and hearing about things on the news, we know that there are some, I don't want to be misquoted, but it's my understanding and I believe I'm correct, but if I'm wrong, it's basically just what I heard, that there are some additional monies left through the COVID monies that were left at the state. So we're sitting down to look at what does that look like, you know, what can we do? Because the conversation is always, you know, we're always thinking about how do we get to that full-day kindergarten? It's never, ever far from our thoughts, but we have to make sure that our unhoused students are accommodated for, and I believe Ms. Bora even made some comments, if I'm not mistaken, at one of our BGNT meetings, I do remember her commenting. Of course, we all believe as educators and as community members that we want full-time kindergarten, but we have to make sure we take care of our needs right now and look at what we could do and then what monies are out there. Because if there's monies out there right now for pre-K, but you can't have full-time pre-K if you don't have full-time kindergarten.
Right, makes sense, okay.
So it's part of our, it's part of our thought process.
And now is the April election question, it's about the 2% cap. Is there another question too or no?
The April vote will be on the actual budget.
Oh, okay.
Which is anticipated to be over the 2% and that's why we had to bring it out to the public for a vote. And that, I know that the administration is looking at what projects they can fit into an annual budget. And there's also, I know we've spoken about this a lot at our committee meetings as well, when Senator Greenstein gave us the million dollars or when she entered a resolution in for a million dollars to give to Applegoth, that was something I don't think anybody on our board knew that was a possibility of doing and never been done, prior to my knowledge, to give our district any funding. So I know I've had conversations with Dr. Chanley in asking what we have, what projects do we have next? And can we begin to put something together where we can go to Senator Greenstein and advocate for her to enter another resolution into next year's budget? And it would be my hope as a board that we would go and potentially testify at the hearings for the state budget. Because where we can't get money through the funding formula, there's other avenues that I think we've just uncovered in this last six months of how we can collaborate with legislatures and our municipality to actually get the funding that we need for some of these projects. And that's something for a very long time that our community was told that it wasn't possible. You know, the municipality and the Board of Education are separate and they don't work together and they don't, they do their thing and we do our thing. And what we've seen in the last eight months of having meetings and having conversations with our elected officials in the municipality, we're one community. And we all need to work together and collaborate together and figure out how we can afford the changes, the, how we can afford to make the necessary improvements in our schools to make sure that, you know, everybody here in our community, you know, we have property values to worry about, right? I think most of us moved into Monroe knowing that we were going to have children or had children at the time and we wanted to send them to Monroe schools because they were rated very high and we wanted to come here for the schools. We want to continue that and we want to grow our school district and we want to continue to see the amazing achievements that we saw here tonight with our students and even more so. So in order to do that, we have to, as an entire community, work together and that is the Board of Education along with the municipal government to figure out how we can get these needs addressed. And I know that is something that we are constantly talking about, the administration and the board leadership of what are the next steps, what's the next items on the agenda? And I know we talked about putting some on the BGNT upcoming meetings to talk about that as well. And the Legislative Action and Community Engagement Committee as well. They've been working on letter writing campaign and getting the letter together and I know a lot of that has been delayed because we wanted to see what monies we were going to get because we bulleted out on, you know, here's a, here's a sample letter that you can use to send out to legislators, but we didn't want to send, we didn't want to put a letter out that had all these listing, all these bullet points for Applegoth if we got the grant and we got the money from the township. So I know that's an ongoing initiative that we're doing too. We need to, we need to continue to push the state in any way we can through the state budget, through grant programs to get funding into our district. Just simply focusing on the funding formula, we've realized is not the way to go with it. And that's all that was being done for so many years and now we are actually branching out and moving forward and we're seeing great results. I mean, I couldn't be more excited that, you know, I personally advocated for over a decade now to get the Board of Education to seriously look at and fix the needs of Applegoth School because that's the one school in this district that was not maintained over, over the years. And it's an incredible pride of mine that this board has been able to collaborate with our legislators and our municipal government. with our legislators and our municipal government to get that done.
I agree with you. I mean, listen, I don't always agree with everything the board does, but I think that was a great accomplishment and you should be applauded for it because it has been something since I've been coming to these meetings that I constantly heard people getting up and complaining and talking about. So to be able to cross that off the list, I think is a great accomplishment. I also think that when you get a response of, oh, it can't be done or it's never been done, is really more a responsive apathy and not wanting to be bothered. So I think it's really important for the board, the community, everybody to move forward in a positive manner and look at the good and try to keep working to build on our community and our school system and not just keep harping on all the negative. Because there's negative everywhere you go, unfortunately. And as we talked about Diwali and coming, looking for the light in the darkness, I think that's really important, especially today. We have a lot of darkness around us and we all need to be the light. So I would hope that, you know, people come here and they, and they try to speak more positively because I know that that's one thing that really bothers me, community-wide, whether it be at the board or any other town meetings, all I ever hear is negativity. And I just, me as a person, I don't like that. It's not good for my mental health. And, and I would hope that, you know, moving forward, that we do get people coming to the podium for the good too, not just the bad. I think it's important to point out that when there's something wrong, right, so that we can work collaboratively to find solutions, but that's what we need. We need problem solvers, like find me solutions, don't just constantly point out the problems. And, and that's what bothers me in general about the community. And so I hope that moving forward, everybody can start putting that, you know, into action because we all have to work together. This is where we're raising our kids and it's really, really important because I know that's what I want for my kids. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public forum. And we do not have anything else to discuss in closed session. So our next scheduled Board of Education meeting is December 6, 2023. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion second.
Can I just make one comment? I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, happy, healthy, and be thankful. And what did Dr. Chanley say? To be kind.
Yes.
So please distribute that through the community, love your family because of all the stuff that's going on nowadays. Kiss and hug them and pray for the people that need the prayers.
Aye. Everyone in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Payne. And thank you, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.